Sorry, go ahead.
That she had, that she was going to and had indeed filed a police complaint regarding the incident. Again, many people were new at the time. I knew that night. You were there. You know, Council Franco is not the only person here rest on that particular night. You swore to follow the US Constitution, State of Connecticut Constitution, Town of Groton Charter, and the RTM rules when you're, when you're an elected official. You're no longer a single citizen. You represent the Town of Groton and its citizens 24/7, inside and outside of your meetings. Being rude, disrespectful, and downright hateful at times breaks rules in each of these categories that you, that you all swore to follow. You're breaking your oath of office. Member Thomas, you're a teacher. I'm sure you demand respect. However, you don't seem to have any idea how to give any respect to others. I guarantee if one of the inmates threatened you, you would report that incident to the appropriate authorities. Yet you belittle Council Franco for doing just as you would do. As a teacher, I would hope you know better than to victim shame anyone. Member Thomas states there's a grassroots movement. Is this movement paperwork filed with the appropriate officials? It's nothing more than radical anarchy. He thrives on bringing hate and chaos to Groton. It's not a political, it's not political enthusiasm, in my opinion. This is just a pathetic play for power. Council Baumgartner, Councilor Bordelone, and Member Surf have drank the Kool-Aid. This is how the people of his so-called movement treat the town council, town staff, and RTM, as well as the citizens of Groton. This movement has no real suggestions for fixing problems that may exist, and his bad behavior is only fostering his agenda. Madam Moderator, I'm asking for you to remove Member Thomas from all of his committee seats until he understands that his poor behavior will not be allowed in the RTM meetings. Madam Moderator, you do have the authority to do this. Now, on to Member Surf. Her ability to follow rules in our town council as well as our RTM is nonexistent. Mayor Melendez told her four times she was out of time, but she continued to ramble on for almost another full minute. She's also breaking her oath of office by not being able to follow the rules she swore to follow. She rambles and doesn't seem to understand what she's saying or doing. It's sad to hear. Her rambling from one subject to another without direction. I really feel she should resign. She stated on November 1st that at the town council meeting of March 1st, she was on tenderhooks waiting to see if a particular vote passed or failed. She said hundreds of people spoke that night. I counted 27 people. Certainly not the hundreds that she stated. Facts do matter.
I'm sorry, you're out of time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm just asking that the recipe put into the record.
I will. Thank you. We are apparently having some audio problems, so we're going to try to address that real quick.
Yeah, we've been looking at it. It's their system. It's, it's being worked on. Sorry, people at home. The RTM members that are on the meeting can hear. It's people watching live. The audio isn't working.
Next up, I have David Franco.
Did you say there's a problem with the recording?
Not the, not the recording. It's live on, on GMTV. It has a live feed for people to watch.
The record will have all this.
Yes, and it's being recorded on Zoom also.
And you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Well, good evening, RTM. I'm David Franco from Mystic. I'm here tonight to comment on the behavior I see from elected officials, which I find concerning. Lies, spinning the truth, conspiracy theories, belligerent lack of decorum, underhanded comments, personal attacks, inappropriate comments, childish behavior, inflammatory rhetoric, and other less decent actions. Our elected officials are expected to represent our community with respect and dignity. I would advise many from this body to speak up to those who handle themselves with less than respectable comments and actions. There are members of this group who continually throw decorum out the window and make this group look unprofessional. Stand up to Representative Ian Thomas, Sima Evans, and Jen Surf and stop their counterproductive behavior.
Thanks.
I'm, now, I'm not an elected official, so I feel I'm free to speak in a manner that suits me, but tonight I won't swear. I listened closely to Representative Ian Thomas at a council meeting, and I was shocked when he talked in-depth about the times and dates regarding the movements of my wife, who is a Groton elected official. This is not normal behavior. What type of person invests that much time to watch someone's movements? To me, it seems obsessive. And to tell you the truth, it angered me. Something's really wrong with this person. As political figures, you've seen the news reports over the past over years. Politicians threatened, politicians harmed, politicians harassed, and intimidated. And I ask you to stand up with those poor behavior. Hold your fellow RTM elected colleagues accountable. This is bigger than Republican and Democrat elections and votes. This is our community. Stop contributing to the embarrassment of our community and bring back decency. And just remember, the loudest person in the room is usually the weakest. Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody else in the room who would like to speak?
I have one letter. Find it, sorry. Public comment asked to be read into the record. It's from Katrina Fitzgerald. Good evening, representatives. In 2014, I was fortunate enough and honored to become a public servant. I served not, served not only on the Board of Education, but, or as a Board of Education member, but as an RTM member as well. I come before you on this evening to make some comments regarding the behavior exhibited during your October meeting by some of those amongst you. In the eight years I served my community, I saw elected officials being polite, businesslike, cooperative, and able to get along with their fellow members while sharing the common goal of bettering our community. I did not witness a mayor, moderator, or board chair be treated with contempt and ill-perceived accusations of wrongdoing as I did at your October meeting. I was appalled and embarrassed for my community. It can be difficult to hold your tongue and contain frustrations at times, but a true public servant will put that aside and focus on the needs of the community. Your constituents expect and deserve civil and dignified behavior from those they have chosen to serve. Please consider airing your personal grieving grievances out of the public eye and follow the rules and decorum and act with the dignity that is expected of you while conducting the important business of our community. Thank you for your attention. Anyone else? Okay, we will move on to receipt of communications. Any receipt of communications? Representative Thomas, you had sent me something asking me to read. That was your communication since you're here. I will let you read that.
He's there, he's there.
Representative Thomas? So anyone else who has receipt of, okay, Representative Chase?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I volunteered to go to a meeting today for Parks and Rec. They're doing strategic planning on a master plan for Parks and Rec, and I have some handouts. There's a public meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock here at Thrive 55 to give your input on what you want to see Parks and Rec Department do. So all of these on the table over there, grab one. There's a, whatever QR code there that you can go. And if you go to greatergroton.com and scroll down to inspiring and visioning Parks and Rec in Groton, and you can view their projects there and, and also give your comments on what you want to see them do. So these will be on the table.
Thank you. Anyone else? Representative Jacob?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I did receive an email from District 2, from J.C. Embois, 169 Chennecassett Parkway. It's pretty lengthy, so I will go ahead and read it. Transparency and accountability have been a consistent war cry by several members of this community. I am emailing you today to address some items that are lacking full transparency and accountability in our community, our residents, and you, the RTM, should be aware of. The first item for clarification is that this, since late May, early June, Council Bordelone and Baumgartner, both city residents, have communicated that they are, were an integral to support a group of Branford Manor residents in trying to form a tenants' union. My question is, has this happened yet? To my knowledge, it has not, and I would like to ask what the progress has been made to this group properly assembled. These residents are looking to, to them to do their part and follow through on your commitment. Secondly, I would like to ask why there has been no disclosure statement made of those connections that Council Bordelone has with the lawyer from some residents of Branford Manor. After a brief search of the knowing community service webpage, it identifies both the lawyer, M.D.R. Scott, and Council Bordelone. As board members, this is a critical information that has been withheld from all of us. Why? I would also like to include Council Bordelone's spouse and RTM District 3 Ian Thomas on this theme of transparency and accountability. At last September, a city council meeting, I witnessed him speaking at length with the attorney for some of residents at Branford Manor. As the city mayor stated at the meeting to hold related in default, we are seeing some town elected representatives actively working behind the scenes to cause possible financial harm to both town and the city. We all have a right to know what is going on behind closed doors. I've also discovered that a local state legislator that represents a portion of Groton works for the same law firm as a Branford Residence Council as well. I do not know if this information has been discussed or disclosed to Groton residents or RTM. I did pass along what I visually witnessed previously to City Mayor Hedrick, if you would like to verification. Attached to my remarks are links to both websites. I'm not implying by any means that there is a wrongdoing. However, it should be declared on, on record to the public. It is my hope the financial arm of Groton Governance, RTM, formally reach out and ask those about this directly, either by consensus through the moderator or refer to the RTM Finance Committee for discussion. Please give us the transparency we all deserve and ask them to clarify what is occurring. And if there are potential conflicts with the sworn oath they are, they all took on behalf of the taxpaying residents of Groton. And I have forwarded that email to you as well.
Thank you. Representative Surf? We can't hear you. You're on mute.
Okay. Point of information. I'd like to know, I was, this, I think this is my fourth term on the RTM, and I've often spoken to the town council when I was on the RTM. Is there, is there some rule that says that if you're a member of one body or another, you can't speak in front of the other body in a citizen's petition as a personal, as you as a person?
You may speak at the town council, yes. But you, but adhere to the time limits.
Well, okay, I have a little trouble with that, as we all know, and I apologize for that. I'm slow. I'm not getting any younger, and so I don't get to say everything that I want to say. So I apologize for that, but the fact that it's, that Ian and I have just been accused of breaking some sort of, some sort of law by speaking to the town council as RTM representatives. And I think it's quite clear that when we speak to the council under citizen's petitions, we're speaking as ourselves. And I'm not that careful about that, but I know Ian is. But so I really, is there, I mean, if there's no law against it, could you, could you make that clear to the people who've just accused us of breaking the law?
So the, I gave the response that you are allowed to speak at a town council meeting. You need to adhere to the rules just like everybody else.
Okay, well, I mean, I do go a little over time, but that's the only rule I didn't adhere to, so I would just like to make that clear because we're being dragged through the mud here.
Okay. Anyone else? Representative Obray?
I don't know if it's appropriate at this point or if it should come under new business, but I think it would be appropriate at this line that the appropriate people would look into a sergeant of arms for both meetings. For the RTM and for, for the RTM and for the council. Then it doesn't come down to somebody battling on the floor or somebody trying to keep the decorum from up there. There's a sergeant of arms that could be called in and remove the person that's the problem.
I'm going to ask that you make that recommendation under new business.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. All right, so I do have one more communication that I was asked to read moments before the meeting. It is quite lengthy. Sorry. Let me get on my glasses.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Just quick, people at home are still having trouble. That's still.
Yeah, they're, they're working on it.
Okay.
Thank you. This will be recorded, though, if you can let people know that it'll be under recording. So on October 18th, J.C. Embois wrote a letter to Representative Thomas. Greetings, Representative Thomas D3D2. After watching the October RTM regular meeting, I find it highly concerning regarding your lack of transparency to the RTM membership and to the community as a whole. Specifically during Agenda Item J10, you failed to disclose that your wife, Councilor Portia Bordelone, was an ex officio member of the RTM as you argued against the motion to change Rule 9.6. This disclosure was done by another RTM, RTM member, D2 Representative Watson in two previous public meetings, 83122 and 91422, who has similar connections to an RTM or to an elected office holder that has the same RTM ex officio status. Why did you not disclose this? At this time, at least, you should have divulged that at the, I'm sorry, at the very least, you should have, this should have been divulged, and at the most, you should have recused yourself from voting on this since this directly relates to the unprofessional actions and behavior Ms. Bordelone has displayed at countless RTM meetings during public petitions available for viewing on the Groton YouTube channel. There are some blurred moral and ethical lines here, sir, between your duty as an elected representative for your district and your loyalty obligation as a husband defending his spouse. Accountability is essential for public servants. None of this is surprising, however, he asked me to write, put this in. None of this is surprising, however, you also failed to disclose this issue at the 83122 RTM Rules Meeting where you voted against a motion to restrict ex officio members from speaking during public petition. You followed suit by lack, lacking transparency at tonight's meeting as well. I will use your own words from a previous RTM meeting. It would be quote-unquote logically consistent to disclose such ties to the public every time prior to voting on matters that seem to be deemed so close to home. Furthermore, I find it crucial to mention your, your several RTM rule violations this evening in defiance of Moderator Russ's repetitive attempts to maintain order in the meeting, particularly Rules 8.5.1, 8.5.2, and 8.7, which, as to which, I have attached a screenshot in case you were not aware. A link to the video recording is also attached. Your action and communication at tonight's meeting can be deemed adversarial and hostile. This should have no place in good Groton government's governance. On another note, I would like to thank you for being so responsive to my last communication with you. It is my hope that you will continue to be fair, firm, and consistent when you read this correspondence into the public record along with your prepared response at the next RTM meeting. Thank you for your time. J.C. Embois, 169 Chennecassett Parkway. Ian Thomas's response. Town Clerk, RTM Moderator, please share the full thread of this exchange with the whole body of the RTM. Thank you. Mr. Embois, unfortunately, I will not be able to attend the RTM meeting tonight due to a schedule conflict with a higher priority project. I will address this exchange during the next communication of reports when I am present. I'm writing in response to your email from earlier October when you sent in response to the RTM meeting of that month. While I did read your previous email in its totality, I will not do so with this recent email as you chose to infuse your rhetoric with pervasive invectives and other such incendiary language. Suffice to say, rather than articulate any particular policy or voting concern, you instead took advantage of the opportunity to question my integrity of service as an elected representative, along with that of my wife, Councilor Portia Bordelone. If you are that invested in promul, I'm sorry, I don't even know what that word is. Promul, promulgating?
Promulgating.
Thank you. Promulgating your provocations into the public arena. You are free to do so at any meeting that has citizen's petitions available, as you are well aware. Essentially, your complaint has been reduced to a couple of key points. One, I'm not consistent enough in disclosing my relationship and associations when speaking under public comments or in regards to certain votes that you feel should warrant such disclosure. And two, I broke decorum in a meeting last month when, in a disagreement with the moderator, over how she was adjudicating a point of order. In response to my first complaint, I will acknowledge that, yes, I do not always scroll through the full list of my relationships and associates, associations every time I speak in public meetings. This is true. I only strive to do so when I feel it is relevant to the item being discussed, and there may be some financial interest at stake that somehow intersects with the current ethical or ethics ordinance. In the very same meeting, you have identified and complained about my lapses, my lapses, and very same, the very same person you use as an example of always disclosing his connection. Representative Watson, in fact, did not share the fact that his wife is the Chair of the Board of Ed, and the Board of Ed would benefit from a grant award we voted for on that night. So in fact, he is not inconsistent with his disclaimers about having a wife that serves on the Board of Ed despite the Board of Ed being on the agenda to receive funding approval from the RTM that night. Since there was some financial amount on the table, this lapse means a little bit closer, leans a little bit closer to the current ethics barrier than my support for an ex officio member of the RTM to be able to speak under citizen's petitions. Yes, my wife, Councilor Portia Bordelone, was the one being targeted at this proposed rule change, which is, in fact, just a change of the moderator's chosen interpretation of the rule and really did not warrant going through the whole rule change process. Regardless of your, regardless if you check the record, I oppose the change of moderators, of moderators, sorry, I was getting a text, moderator's interpretation to our, to, in February of 2022 that removed the ability of RTM members not to speak under citizen petitions, which did not require a rule change, just as I oppose this change in the moderator's interpretation that removed that night, that right, from ex officio members as well. That is what logical consistency looks like, not this expectation that I will read whatever hyperbole and insinuation you choose to interject in your communications to persons with whom you have some disagreement or displeasure. Holy, I'm sorry, this is really long.
Yeah, I know, and I think that it's not fair to, you could probably email this to everybody.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't realize this was this long. I got this immediately before. So I'm going to forward this to all of you after the meeting and let you read it. My apologies. I can't continue reading all of that into this record. Other, I received information, or I received communication from Representative Crocker Hubbard, Representative Scott, and Representative Thomas that they would not be here tonight. Are there any other? Representative Watson?
It is on, okay. I just want to, just want to make it clear that at the September meeting, when I read the minutes from the Rules and Procedures meeting, that I did, I did say that my wife was also an ex.
Point of order, this is communications.
Whatever. I've said what I had to say, so it's okay.
Thank you. There any other? Any other communications? Okay, seeing none, we are moving on to the report of the town manager.
Good evening. For the financial report, the preliminary fund balance as of June 30th, '22, unaudited, is approximately $31.9 million, which is 23% of the 22 adopted budget. As you might recall, some of that will be eaten up likely through this next budget year. Contingency fund is still at its originally appropriated $300,000, and we have approximately $1.5 million in the capital reserve fund, so fairly stable there. I'm going to send you out the, I'm going to keep it brief because we have planning economic development staff, but I'll send out my report later. A note about Mystic Education. We do have a mediation set next week on the 16th. So we're moving on to the next phase of that, since the state canceled the sale agreement. We just got word that our next round of opioid, opioid payments will total a little over $110,000. The council, town council, will take that up in terms of first deciding how they want to distribute the process. So that'll be coming to them soon. We're working with TVCCA and the new building, tearing down those three current buildings and putting up a new building. There's going to, they're going to be at the town council next week to give an update and show what's going on, so encourage you to watch. My report, though, will have some further information on it tonight, some, some schematics on it. We're working, if you remember, the Wolfbrook Watro's property that we're trying to obtain for open space, we're confident that will wrap up before the end of the year. It's just about done, so it's moving along. And then we're working with UConn Department of Marine Sciences to do an oyster shell recycling project, a pilot project. It's, would be the first in Connecticut. There's one, there, there's similar things in other states, but it'll be the first one in Connecticut, so that's upcoming. And that's all I have. Like I said, I'll send the full report out tonight.
Are there any questions for the town manager? Seeing none, we will move on to economic development. John Reiners here, Director of Planning and Development, and Paige Bronk. Sorry, I didn't see you behind there. Economic Development Manager.
Good evening, everyone. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. With me tonight is Paige Bronk. Also, we'll give a brief overview of what's happening around town from an economic development perspective, and then happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. Just as a reminder, I think everybody gets this in their monthly packet, a pretty detailed economic development report that Paige's team and others are putting together, just to give everybody around town. These are also posted on our webpage, a good status of what is happening, some of the initiatives that we're working on. So anytime folks have questions, please always go to that. And I also have to mention, please check out our Greater Groton webpage. There's a lot of our current initiatives are on that, as well as some ways for the public to input on some of the projects that we have. A lot of our new initiatives are up on that, so something certainly for everybody to look at, as well as our Explore More Groton webpage for more updated information. With that, I'll hand it over to Paige. She'll give some overview, and then I'll jump back in.
Good evening. Paige Bronk, Economic and Committee to Develop and Manager. So normally, I think we come before the RTM, although it's been a while that we run through a list of initiatives and projects. I think we're going to do it a little bit differently this time. I'm going to run through some macroeconomic conditions for Groton. I'll be as brief as I can. Some of them are a little negative at this point, given where we're at with the economy, but it's important to understand where Groton is in this overall economic climate. And then John will finish up in talking about something a little bit lighter, maybe, some of the opportunities and projects that we're working on. So bear with me. So just kicking off, talking about unemployment, I guess that's not so bad. It clearly spiked during the pandemic, but it has stabilized, and we were, we've been under 4% for a few months now, which is, which is fairly good. However, despite the low unemployment, we're finding that businesses are having a hard time filling vacant jobs, and that, that's across the board. That's small business all the way up to electric boat. My understanding is electric boat still has hundreds of jobs, vacancies that they're looking to fill. Next item, population decline. People have stated, I've heard over the years, that we have growth and we have all these people, et cetera. Well, the facts of the matter are that basically in 19- that basically in 1990, our population was 45,000. In 2006, it was 43,000, and today it's at 39,000, and it continues to trend downward. And it's not a significant decline, but it is when you are looking to attract investment and you're looking to grow within the community. And I'll try to explain a little bit more, but just know that this decline kind of compounds our challenges in trying to market Groton as a whole. In terms of jobs, that's a great statistic for us. There are 27,000 jobs in Groton. That data is from 2019, by the way. We use census data. Just to let you know how large of a number that is, that's the same population as the city of New London. So just kind of put that as a comparable. We are definitely a magnet, a generator of jobs in southeastern Connecticut. That $27,000, 27,000 job number is actually increased from 2016. 2016, we had 25,000 jobs, so it's a 2,000 job increase within a relatively short period of time. Also, to give some perspective, there's a labor market area for southeastern Connecticut. Think of it in terms of maybe, you know, a half hour, no more than 45 minute drive from our area. Groton has 23% of all of the jobs within southeastern Connecticut's labor market. So roughly one quarter is located right here in Groton. Despite the large number of jobs, we have a significant challenge regarding a commuter statistic. We've mentioned in the past, and honestly, I think it's confused some people, that 80% of the jobs in Groton are held by commuters. Some people might say, well, so what? What does that mean? I can't really sink my teeth into that. I'll try to explain that a little bit more, but the situation's actually worsening. As I told you before, we increased the number of jobs since 2016 by 2,000. The commuter number has also followed. So we've increased the number of commuters by 2,000 as well. So rather than being at 80% commuters, we're now at 82%. It's trending higher. So for some reason, we are not we're not converting the people that come into town every day to work to become residents. We're missing that. In terms of maybe a comparable community, what does that 82% commuter rate mean? Is that a big deal or not? In southeastern Connecticut, the, the next even close community would be Norwich. Norwich has 12,000 commuters. We have 22,000. There's 10,000 person commuter differential, and that was a distant second. All of the other communities dropped way off. So I think it's the sheer volume of people that come in every day and also leave every day that is really concerning to us. It's not the 80%, the 82%, but we have thousands of people that we're not capturing. And I'm, I wanna touch on why that's important. I mentioned in the past that their money goes with them. What does that mean? It's not just tax revenue for Groton, but their income is being spent elsewhere in other communities, whether it's they're spending it on housing, they're spending it on dining, shopping, entertainment, but it's not being spent here. And that has, that has certain impacts. You know, we are expected to go and market Groton and to attract investors, and I think we've made some progress on that, but retailers, they actually have a formula, and it's heavily based upon demographics, about population. They want to locate their new businesses in places where there's growth. And typically, that growth is based on consumers. They, these, these businesses who might come here, they wanna see an upswing. They wanna see that there are people that live, work, play, and spend money in the community before that business is going to invest a new location here. We had a recent survey, it was a few months ago, actually. We asked people in Groton, what do you wanna see for future businesses? What are you interested in? And there were some specific company names. You could probably guess a few, but in general, they wanted more options for eateries, shopping, and recreation. Movie theater, restaurants, certain retailers that names have always come about. Well, all of those wanna know about population, and that's why it's important. So we could have 5 million jobs, but if no one lives here, we're gonna miss opportunities in track and attracting the right types of businesses to Groton. And then I think regarding existing businesses post pandemic, they've been suffering as well. I mentioned that it's difficult to actually fill some of these jobs. So you've probably noticed yourself that many of the businesses have cut back on some of their operating hours. You might find that they close on certain days that they used to be open, and people are having a really, really hard time in, in filling these positions. One of the interesting items that came out with some of our conversations is that daycare. The lack of daycare availability has a direct bearing, not only on, on caregivers or parents, but, but also the businesses themselves. We had conversations with mystic businesses, and they right up front said daycare is impacting the ability of some of their workers to arrive, to fill their jobs on a daily basis. Housing. We've been talking about the need for housing. Recently, there have been two really important housing studies that were done. Well, one was a housing study dealing with market-based housing. Another one was an affordable housing plan. I would recommend, if you have some time, to glance those over. If you haven't, what's really interesting is they were done independently, but they came up with really similar conclusions regarding demand. What they found is that Groton has less than 3% of its housing stock as vacant. That's a really low number. I'm not a realtor, but we have some here that are experts in that. Really, that's a really low number. It doesn't give you a whole lot of wiggle room. People that are coming into town and they need housing, they're finding long lists for available housing units. The, the cost is fairly high to rent in particular, and the the standard of these units isn't, isn't that high. So they're paying a lot of money for a fairly inferior product. Basically, our studies found that there's a demand for between 3,000 and 5,000 units to satisfy demand between now and 2030, 3,000 to 5,000. So when people say, well, I know about this project where there's 100 units here, a couple hundred units there, that's not gonna satisfy the demand. We really need a major shift to catch up in our lack of inventory for housing units. I'm hearing comments directly from Pfizer, EB, and clearly other small businesses. It's not simply about job growth. It's also about lifestyle changes. People might be downsizing, empty nesters, people are getting divorced, people want a smaller unit. There are a number of reasons. It's not simply because of the ramp up at EB. There are a number of parameters. Mortgage interest rate, I think people can see that on the news. I think in Connecticut, it's, it's nearing 7%. Seems to be shifting every week, and that's about up from, that's doubled from about a year ago. So that has a huge bearing on what people can afford if they are going to buy a home. Despite those rate increases, home sales prices still seem to be relatively strong. They may have come down a little bit, but in comparison to the ramp up over the past few years, those values are holding fairly well. Sales prices today are higher than a year ago. In terms of renting, more than half of Groton's residents actually rent. We believe the split is somewhere between 60% renting, 40% home buying. These rental costs have gone up due to the lack of supply, similar to homeownership, and there's extremely high demand. Average rent is about 1,400 a month. That may be trending much higher. So really, we have a supply and demand issue. It's really important to recognize, and until we start providing more supply, the demand is gonna continue to outstrip that, and prices are gonna continue to go up. That leads me to my last point. We have a number of vacant town properties that are still sitting there, and you know, we have some that are active. John could touch on a few, but we have a number of these properties that that's probably one of the best ways that we're gonna actually try to help in the short term in satisfying some of the housing demand is by trying to increase the number of these vacant properties, getting them on the market, and try to increase that supply. In the meantime, some of them have been empty for more than 10 years, and they're degrading rapidly. And we have a number of vandalism incidences. There are attractive nuisances at this point, and they're significantly degrading. I guess the last, the very last thing for me would be, I think of the, the loss of tax revenue to the town. I've been through a few budget rounds, and I listened to all the needs, and RTM will talk about how we can save a little bit of money here, a little bit of money there. These schools, vacant school properties, we're losing millions in tax revenue. I think that's the simplest way to look at it. You know, Seeley School alone, that development, we're anticipating it would be, let's just round it down, it'd probably be higher, million dollars tax revenue per year. Multiply that by the number of years that it's been vacant, and this adds up fairly quickly. So please don't take my comments as negative. It's kind of just a little bit of ground truthing to try to demonstrate reality in Groton at the moment, but we do have the ability to focus on some of our opportunities and our projects and try to maybe fill some of the gaps and needs of the community, and I know John wants to talk a little bit more about that.
Thanks, Paige. So a few other exciting things that are happen, happening on the positive side of things. I think everybody here is quite familiar with the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA, the 8.6 million dollars that we received for that. Very recently, our Long Term Recovery Committee did send off its first recommendation to the town council for 20 projects. We will be reviewing that with the council at next Tuesday's town council meeting to start moving some of those projects forward. That first bunch was approximately 2.4 million dollars, and we're looking for some direction from the council on how to move that forward. We did recently apply for, State of Connecticut has some pretty exciting grants out there right now. We recently applied for a community challenge grant in the amount of 9.8 million dollars. That's money that would be invested. The main target area was the Quantic Bridge area, right along Route 1 there. That's something the state has asked us for a little bit more information, which to me, when they're asking us for more information, that's usually a pretty positive sign that they liked what we were proposing. That was something we discussed in a number of town council meetings. One of the tricky things with some of these new state grants is the turnaround time on these is pretty short, so we're doing-
I'm sorry, if we can hold comments, it's getting really distracting. Thank you.
So we're doing our best to have a very clear, open, and transparent process, working this through with our town council. And then, you know, once we receive these grants, there'll be a lot more public information out there on those. We've been working with the Groton Housing Authority on a CDBG, a Community Development Block Grant, and a Department of Housing Grant for 2 million dollars, as well as a CHAFA grant for Grasso Gardens also in the amount of 3 million dollars. So looking to get at least 5 million dollars invested back into the Grasso Gardens property, which would be quite exciting. Earlier this week, Monday night, we were talking to the town council about the Community Investment Fund, another state of Connecticut, DECD grant, and that is, there's actually going to be nine rounds in that grant. They've already given out the first round. We're looking to apply in the second round and in subsequent rounds of that, for that particular grant. Only 52 or 54, I think it's 54 municipalities out of the 169 in Groton are eligible to apply for it. So that gives us a good leg up. The state had reached out to us to make sure we're interested in projects. We had a call with them last week, attended a webinar, and really, we're pushing forward on that one. We'll be talking to the town council. Not only did we talk to them this past Monday about it, we'll be talking to them next Tuesday about some projects to move forward in this round two grant, and then looking to some of the subsequent rounds, and we'll be applying for millions of dollars for investment in town projects and areas in development that'll be truly transformational in an area. That's what it's really looking for. I do also wanna focus, you know, Paige talked a little bit about some of our school properties, but the redevelopment of some of our former school sites. Some of those are moving along quite well. The Colonel Legyard School is working its way through the planning and zoning process in the city of Groton. So we're excited that that's moving forward. The Seeley School was approved for, I believe it was 306 multifamily units. Currently, that is under an appeal, but we'll see how that works through the court system. I think all the briefs were due on that last week, so that should be speeding up through the process. And we are continuing to work with Thayer Mahan on Groton Heights, and we hope to have some more exciting news on that in the next few weeks. Again, I can't stress enough checking out the Greater Groton website, as well as our Explore More, looking at our monthly updates. There are some other private development opportunities that are happening around town, some hotel conversions to multifamily, some other multifamily developments on Drostic Drive, and a little bit of investment still happening in Mystic Central Hall. They're finally building out the residential units there and starting to get those on the market for sale, which is exciting. And we're still seeing a good amount of residential activity, remodels, mini splits, you know, heating systems, roofing. So people are still investing in their properties in town, and that's something we're really happy to see. With that, happy to answer any questions on any of the projects that either Paige or myself had brought up tonight, and thank you for giving us the time to talk to you.
Any questions? I have Representative Evan has had her hand up for a while.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I did have some questions for Mr. Bronk, if it's possible to have him answer. I just wanted to know, when you were mentioning the low amount of housing in Groton, the planning and zoning has permitted almost 740 units since December of 2021. Is that need, I mean, that seems like an awful lot to me, so that doesn't really jive with what you were saying. Did you consider that in your, when you were speaking?
Yes, I had referenced the two housing reports that were done. One is the Affordable Housing Plan. That's done by RKG, Housing Firm, and also the Market Rate Housing Document that was done by K'moin. And they basically looked at everything that's in the pipeline. And so, yeah, what was in the pipeline compared to what they anticipate for their projected needs? I think much of that, I can't quote the exact number, but what was in the pipeline was included in their studies.
When, can you just tell me the dates of those two studies? Was that 2022 then?
Those studies were both completed right around the end of 2021, so they had some projects in the pipeline, so I believe the Seeley School was in the pipeline in that. I can't recall if the other-
Was the ledges included in that? That's almost 340 units right there.
Sorry, was which project?
Ledges 2.
The ledges 2, I do not believe was included in that, but as I was gonna say, those were pipeline projects, so that 3% vacancy rate and the fact it takes some time to get those units constructed. So there still is an issue today with housing, and it's great that we have 700 units that have been approved, but there's still the need per those reports for somewhere between 3 and 5,000 units. So there's still a big gap there.
I have a few other questions. I'm just curious, you- I have a few other questions. I'm just curious, you, Mr. Bronk said that kind of the lack of population growth or the population decline in Groton was the problem with luring stores and businesses here. Waterford, Connecticut has a population just slightly over three thousand. And they have tons of businesses. They have the Crystal Mall. They have the Best Buy development. They have quite, quite a bit of development. So I'm just curious, I, I think that business development, it, it doesn't just have to do with population growth. We're definitely the largest population center in southeastern Connecticut. And so there must be something else going on in terms of a view of open space. You know, it, it doesn't jive to me.
I certainly could try to answer that. I mean, we deal with a lot of expert retail. We, we deal with a number of expert retail site selectors. Population is a huge driver. Honestly, I've, I've never heard them say anything about open space. So-
I meant just like, I, I mean, I meant open space for development. I, I don't know. I mean, to my mind, population, you know, if and I'm sorry, I misspoke. Waterford is nineteen thousand, but if we have a population that's, you know, twice that, then I, I don't understand why they are having such amazing development. It must be something other than population is my point.
Well, I think there are a number of variables. It's a formula. And population is certainly a major variable. Also, household income is a variable as well, but I, I, I don't think that the Crystal Mall, unless I misunderstood you, that's not an example of success.
Well, it was for thirty years. It's going out of business now, but they have Best Buy, they have Dick's, they have, you know, tons of development in that neck of the woods Target, you know.
I, I think, you know, when we deal with, we often will, will go to retail conferences and understand more about retail trends. And the first thing that I want to say, it's not simply a Groton phenomenon nationwide. Retail is suffering, it's shrinking, and it's not just the internet. You'll find a lot of existing retailers are actually being chopped up. You'll find in the future, for example, Home Depot will have small kiosks within Home Depot. It'll almost become a mini shopping mall of its own. But having said that, things are quite different today than they were thirty years ago. And I, I think they're a lot more specialized. Retailers can go wherever they want. And they're focused on where the growth is, where they can have successful business operations. So population and household income are definitely major variables.
And I have one last question. I think that you and Mr. Reiner, do you guys live in Rhode Island?
Yes, we do.
Well, I'm just curious because, you know, you're, you guys work in Groton, you're part of that eighty-two percent of commuters. What would it take to have you live in Groton or how, I mean, I'm just curious because you're speaking of this other like eighty-two percent, but you're part of it. And so I'm curious, what would, you know, change your decision calculus in terms of wanting to live in Groton? And, and I'm assuming the same kind of calculus goes on with a lot of those other people who are part of that eighty-two percent.
I, I think the responses we've heard from people resonate across the board. It's not just for two people that drive from Rhode Island, but I think, by the way, twenty percent of the people that come into Groton daily come through I ninety-five into Groton from Rhode Island. But I think that people have indicated they want more choice. They want more eateries, they want more housing, they want more shopping. There are some brand names that people have thrown out there in some of the surveys. And in order to get those brand names, you, you have to have growth. It's required to have certain demographics. There'll be some retailers that will not even look at a community if you're not over a certain number in household income of population. So I think that's the same for a lot of people that I believe in order to convert some of the people that come in here every single day and work in Groton and leave Groton at the end of the day. There need to be certain offerings and Groton's a great place. It's a great community, but we have to take it to the next step. Saying, you know, what we did thirty years ago is not an adequate standard for today.
And also to kind of piggyback on that a little bit, in order to change that number, we need more housing. There's not a place for those, for any percentage of those eighty-two percent of people to locate today. When we have vacancy rates that are, you know, three percent, we hear quite often from our businesses, from EB, from Pfizer, that their workers can't find housing here. And if people want to move here, there needs to be more housing. It's, it's supply and demand.
Thank you.
Representative Watson, you had your hand up?
Thank you. I just want to thank the two of you for coming out and, and sharing information with us tonight. I was curious whether whether our military housing and the Navy population are included in part of that, that, that traveling eighty-two percent or whatever it is. Is that, is that, is that set aside? Not part of what you're talking about? Or are they part of what you're, what you're presenting here tonight?
That's an excellent question. I actually don't know a full answer to that. I believe that our market study that we had done would include that data. But there's, you know, there's somewhat of a split, I think, between civilians that would go on the base versus others who might be working on the base. I, I'd actually like to get more information on that before I provide an answer.
We had done an in-depth analysis a number of years back, looking at, I think it was some commuting patterns and household income based on including the Navy base numbers. Off the top of my head, I, I don't have those numbers, but we could take a look at that. That data might even be on our website.
At one point, military housing used to be considered affordable housing. I don't know whether that's the case or not. It doesn't sound like it from the numbers here telling us here tonight. So, I mean, you're a big part of our community and they have needs and wants and stores that they want to go to too. Maybe they ought to be included in part of, of the part of what you're studying.
Yeah. And a lot of the data that we utilize is also the US Census data. So some of the housing is counted or some of the residents, some of that housing and the people who live it are counted. Some of it, I think the on-base units, I don't recall if they're counted towards our census numbers. But that's something we do put out there when we do our marketing, our promotions.
Representative Surf. You're muted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have a number of questions. One of which is, I have heard many times that the reason people don't live in Groton is because the property taxes are too high. And that's why they go to Ledyard and, you know, even for the North Montville, places like that where the taxes aren't that high. I have really not seen Groton in the whole time that I've lived here, make a huge effort to bring down those property taxes. This recent year was one of the worst of all because the real estate, the market was so high at the same time as the reval. And when I asked a Mr. Burt if we could not have done a phase in, which would have eased the property tax burden on residential property. He told me that the finance director thought it was too much work. It's things like this, which I think we could make more of an effort on. And I'm curious as to whether Mr. Reiner and Bronk have asked people, you know, who commute here, have tried to make an effort to find out whether it is something like property taxes. As far as daycare is concerned, I think that's really important. And I, I saw in the ARPA funds, I was just reading quickly through it, that only about a hundred thousand dollars had been allocated to helping with daycare. I think we could do a heck of a lot better than that. And maybe you, you reuse part of Fitch Middle School as a daycare center and subsidize daycare. Just like we subsidize schools, you know, we could subsidize caring for smaller children and allow people to go to work. And the, the third thing I'd like to ask about is the type of housing that we have. A lot of the housing that we have has been turned into short-term rentals. So that's part of my question there. And the other one is, people seem to want to build only high-end homes and high-end apartments in Groton. Even the, what was going to be put on the Mystic Oral School was going to be fairly high-end apartment rentals. I see that we need lower-end rentals for young people who are starting out in EB or Pfizer or anyplace else. And all our young people from these families, our families here who say they can't afford to live in Groton. So why can't we live, we build something, you know, affordable housing type thing for young people. And I see, by the way, I have to congratulate you. As I go through town, I see a lot of small developments. You know, here and there in, in, in little pockets of Groton that I didn't even know were, were empty. I see small developments which are very nice. And, you know, I consider something like a development of, you know, twenty or thirty units, really possibly very pleasant for young people to live in, for anybody to live in. And if we have small lots like that, could you, could you explain to me how we can turn, even in a, in a a sort of, you know, a fairly residential area with a large acreage? Is it possible to turn some of these, people have a couple of, you know, a couple of acres or something like that to turn that into a twenty-unit apartment complex for young people? So I know that's a lot of questions, but those are all the things I'm asking myself.
Okay, so I'll jump on some of those and Paige can help me with some of these. So taxes, we currently have the second lowest tax rate in the region. So I have not heard from developers or from prospective residents that they don't want to locate in Groton because of taxes. That, that's not something that we've heard. As far as daycare, we are actually looking to partner with a local daycare provider for the Community Investment Fund to help expand the, some of the daycare capabilities that we have here. So that's something we are looking into. It's actually an issue and a topic that Mr. Bronk has been talking about. The fact that we need more daycare in town for a few years. And I think that might have been identified in one of our market studies. I don't know if there's anything more you want to add to that.
I, I think it was the business community that actually brought it to my attention. And then I also learned of the waiting list at the TVCCA. And I, I think those two combined with the, the business community with basically a social service agency came up with the same issue in need, became clear in my mind that that's something that has to be addressed.
Jumping onto housing, so specifically for short-term rentals, we haven't done a crazy independent deep dive on it, but in working with some of the monitoring companies that watch and help the enforcement of short-term rentals, I believe last I looked, our number of total short-term rentals in Groton was somewhere around three hundred. That was town and city. I don't know how much of an actual impact that has had overall. I think it shows that there's a, a desire and a demand for that type of housing, but that three hundred, is it having some level of impact potentially, but really that bigger three to five thousand number of shortage of units of what we need? It's really the bigger piece of that equation. When we think about housing, you know, we talk about housing a lot. There's so many different levels of housing affordability, market rate housing, market rate housing. There's, you know, just our regular middle of the road and then many scales up. What we're seeing and hearing from the development community is that there's a great deal and a great need for market rate housing.
Excuse me, can you explain what that means, market rate housing?
Sure, I was, you, you beat me to the punch. I was just going to talk about that. So in, when we talk about market rate housing, that is housing that is not affordable. It's not deed restricted housing. So market rate housing really can fall into the upper higher income, which there is a great need and desire for upper income housing within Groton. That's something we're not meeting the need for. There's, you know, when we think of other moderately priced, but not deed restricted affordable housing, those can be rents that are anywhere from fourteen to eighteen hundred dollars a month for a two or three bedroom. To some people, that might seem like a lot of money, but as you start throwing or, you know, combining roommates or work, young working professionals. A lot of our young working professionals are looking for actually a nicer rental unit. Many of them don't want to buy housing. They want to rent housing. It's a very different model than what many of us have always looked at of, you know, buying a house and having that mortgage. Many of them want to be mobile and be able to just pick up and leave at any point in time. The need for affordable housing is something that we definitely recognize for additional affordable housing. The Affordable Housing Plan that we did, did address that within Groton, approximately twenty-three percent of our year-round housing stock is defined by the state as meeting the definition of affordable housing, but we're still not meeting the need. And I think we often hear a lot about that affordable housing need, but we're also not doing enough to help the construction of that because affordable housing has to be subsidized in some way, whether it's through direct monthly payment for very, very low income affordable housing or just the creation of rental affordable housing that doesn't have a monthly subsidy linked to the monthly rent, but there still needs to be a way to build that. And we don't have developers that are looking to build that in Groton right now. There's things that we can do to incentivize that. We were talking about that a little bit at the town council meeting on Monday night with the Community Investment Fund and with some of the excess properties that we own as a town, if we want to see mixed income, both market rate and affordable housing combined in some developments, that's something we could do at some of our excess properties and help move some of that forward. Again, a lot of what developers are looking at, they do very detailed market analyses. More so than what we did looking at our housing market analysis, our, our housing market study and our affordable housing plan, but both of those plans do get into detail about the different segments of the housing affordability population and what some of the numbers are at each of those kind of income thresholds.
Just one additional comment that you would touch on it, John, that there is demand and lack of supply at most price points across the market. So it might seem odd that there's a comment and it's even in our, our housing study that said that we're lacking supply for higher end. Someone might say, well, we don't need to worry about that. The market will take care of it. Well, the problem is, if someone's going to buy a higher end home, if they don't find something that's suitable, they're going to buy from a moderate price range, which bumps those individuals out of the market. And then the, the, the person with the wealth actually will invest in that and upgrade the property. So our studies have found there's actually a lack of supply on all price points. And there's also a lack of options at those price points throughout the spectrum as well.
Next on my list is Representative Powers.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And thank you guys for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Just have like two or three questions. As far as developmental land is concerned in the town, what is the quality of it? And do we have an idea as how many acres that could be developed? And what are the services that go with it? All have to do with who's going to develop, whether there's water lines, whether there's sewer lines, runoff. We have many different things that the zoning board goes through. That's my first question. The second one would be, has the new zoning ordinances helped us in getting people to build affordable and the, the variety of housing developments that we need in town? Those are my two questions. Thank you.
So as far as the exact acreage of good developable land, that, that's a tough one. There's a number of properties that we help promote and put out there. When we see properties for sale, we will help get the word around on those. One of the things that's difficult is if somebody doesn't want to sell their land, we can't make them sell their land. So we see and hear from a lot of people, why isn't this shopping plaza turning over? Or why isn't there more investment in downtown? Well, we can't make people want to sell their property or redevelop their property. We can offer great zoning in place, which we've seen has helped in some instances. The change in the zoning along in the aquatic bridge area for like the massage school, the villages of Bluff Point. We've seen some good investment on some of those smaller sized properties that one of the representatives, I think, Representative Surf had mentioned some of those smaller developments. But as far as the larger pieces, generally what developers are looking for are larger pieces of- are larger pieces of property that have access to water lines, sewer lines, you know, a, a well-functioning roadway. If there's gas in the, in the street too, that, that's definitely a plus. And we are constantly getting calls from developers asking about, hey, what else is out there? Anything new going on? What's happening with the schools? What's happening with, you know, Pleasant Valley? What are you guys doing with that? What are you doing with Claude Chester? What are you doing with S.B. Butler? Developers are interested in these properties, um, and where, um, we try to direct them to other available properties that are around town. And then even some of those other properties that we direct people to. The asking price of those properties is often, uh, kind of, for lack of a better term, out of whack with how difficult the land might be to actually develop. There might be too much, uh, ledge and rock and, uh, poorly drained soils on the property that it may have access to water and sewer, but it's a very expensive site to develop. And when someone's asking multiple million dollars for that piece of property, um, you know, the development clearing costs, uh, should be somewhere around five percent of the total cost. And when those might be approaching ten or twenty percent, it just throws the numbers way off.
Representative Bailey.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Moderator. I have a question for John Reiner, um, concerning the greater Groton website. Is there, uh, is it exclusive to only, like for surveys? Is it only exclusive to the town of Groton or anybody that can access it even if they live in another state or another town?
So it is on, uh, the world wide web, so anybody in the world can, uh, check that. One of the things we have, uh, started doing is having people creating logins, I believe, for some of the surveys that we have done. And that was something, as we were going through one of our surveys, we were seeing that, uh, we were getting multiple repeat votes on some things. Uh, and as we looked at that, we did, as we put that data out there, we did, uh, reference that some of them had multiple votes associated with it. So to take that with a grain of salt, we've been trying to do some things to correct that. But it's not just about surveys, it's also about getting, um, some of these projects out there in a different way and just helping create awareness of some of the things that are going on.
Uh, if I may ask, well, obviously there would be a lot of, uh, ambiguity without even knowing about it, perhaps. Would that be correct?
I'm not sure what you mean.
That not all the tally up for a survey for either one thing or another concerning either a question or some kind of a project would guarantee that anybody that answers up to the survey, it, it could be anybody, you would have no knowledge of it, of where they're located at. Is that correct?
I believe now we do require some, uh, level of, uh, login, associated emails, uh, on some of these. Do you know the, the full detail of that?
Um, I'm not a technical expert on that, but I can, um, indicate that the staff is advised. They, there is a way for them to know if someone is replying from Groton or outside of Groton. There is a mechanism for them to identify so that we can, um, better understand, uh, true local response versus something that's wider.
Okay, thank you.
Representative Casper.
Uh, thank you, Madam Moderator. Uh, thank you, gentlemen. I, I have a couple of questions, um, one, one on housing. Um, how do we compare to the surrounding towns? Aren't they in the same boat that their, this demand for housing would extend in this immediate area?
I, I can tackle that. Generally speaking, yes. I, I can't compare us to, um, uh, Stonington or exactly to New London. Uh, but clearly in just reading the paper, you can see that New London has really ramped up recently uh, with several housing projects to try to satisfy the demand. When we were working with the two separate consultants on the studies that I've referenced, um, they were basically saying, this is not simply a Groton problem. This is a regional problem, so that the, the data that is found in the studies, uh, although it's accurate for Groton, it's somewhat indicative of a larger area as well. Um, in, in to some degree coastal New England. Um, we, we haven't always been on the forefront of trying to increase production for development. Uh, we often, uh, our, our regulations have not, uh, allowed for that. Therefore, our inventory in many of the coastal New England communities has lagged with the actual demand is.
And, and one of the tricky parts with Groton is, you know, Waterford, uh, Stonington isn't gonna have that same commuter rate that we do. So, you know, I think a lot of the surrounding communities have often been, uh, bedroom communities for Groton. If we wanted to tackle and pull in some of that eighty percent, we certainly would need to increase our housing production. But yeah, I, it, it is a larger regional problem at all levels of the, the housing market and affordability spectrum.
And, um, the second question I have has to do with the demographics. Uh, Groton's a larger town than Stonington or Waterford. But if you took the top twenty thousand in Groton, I'm sure we would outdo Stonington and Waterford. Is that fair to say?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm talking income-wise.
I don't have it broken down right in front of me of what our top, the top half of the percentage of income is. You know, we, we do know that we have, uh, a fair amount of high, uh, wage earners in town. We also know that there's, uh, a fair amount of lower wage income earners in town. So, and, you know, all that blend within census data. And when, as Paige was talking, when a lot of these retailers are looking, they're looking at either shrinking population, stagnation or growth of population and also, you know, eerie median income, they're looking at averages, but they're also looking at some of those outline factors of, or what's the top ten percent? What's the top twenty percent? So, you know, some of that data does play into our favor too.
Representative Cop.
Hi, thanks very much. Um, thank you, Madam, uh, Madam Moderator, excuse me. Um, gentlemen, I am, I continue to be impressed by your presentations. Every time you have come before this body, I, I'm fascinated and I think you're doing a really great job. And to me, it's clear that we need to put money and, uh, time and attention on building, focusing on the future of this town. Um, some of the retailers you, you have not named probably are Trader Joe's, Whole Foods. Some of the things that, that require the demographics that we do not have. Um, and I just want to say that I, I'm very supportive of developing the housing that we need in this town. And I want to thank you very much. I think you've been professional and compelling. And, um, I hope we continue to listen to you and, and to, to build this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Wells.
Unmute. Uh, thank you, Madam Moderator. I heard you mention that, uh, there's apparently some state funding or grants for the aquatic bridge area. And I'm wondering if that money would, uh, would be some opportunity to move forward on that, uh, mixed village centers, excellent mixed village center zoning. Cause right now, you know, the zoning's there, but it's still the same place. So, uh, I was just wondering what, what that, uh, import, what that portends for, uh, aquatic bridge.
The, the short answer is yes. Uh, yeah, so some of the proposals that we put into, uh, that Community Challenge Grant did have a big focus on, um, kind of the multiplier effect of that money then being used and leveraged with other private development money. And there was a big focus on creation of housing, uh, within that grant program.
I've, uh, you know, uh, I've occasionally, uh, take, uh, Route One from Guilford to Old Saybrook. And I can, and if you take that road, you can see what mixed village center looks like. The good and where it's there and where it's not. And so I, I really been quite impressed with that zoning change. Thank you very much.
Representative Tukum.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, kind of briefly touched on it for the Community Challenge Grant. Um, are there certain parameters and can they be, uh, reapplied to more than once?
The Community Challenge Grant, I can't remember off the top of my head if there's gonna be another round on that. The Community Investment Fund, there will be, um, a number of additional rounds on that one. So right now we're looking to prepare. By January sixth, the second round is due. They're looking to have a total of nine rounds, uh, giving around, out somewhere in the vicinity of eight hundred million dollars in total. So that's over all nine rounds. The Challenge Grant, I can't, was that just?
Um, the state had advised the Challenge Grant would only be two rounds. And, um, as John mentioned, these, these come up pretty quickly. And, uh, the notice of funding availability hits the street. They give you a limited amount of time. We, we intentionally waited on round one because, uh, it's, it's required to develop these public-private partnerships. We waited for round two, when we could actually work with some property owners. Uh, we took the benefit of some ARPA allocations, uh, for some public projects. Um, our goal, we, we saw what New London did. They, they sought, uh, they, they submitted an application nearly ten million dollars and they secured six million. We, in round two, submitted a nine point eight million and we're hopeful to get the lion's share of that. And we have a really strong proposal with partners. Uh, in terms of a third round, they have not stated it. Um, I, I think it's doubtful. If there was a third round, it would be quite small.
Uh, again, for the Challenge Grant versus that Community Investment Fund, which we know there'll be numerous more rounds.
Representative Dauthier.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, my question is for either, um, Mr. Bronk or Mr. Viner, whoever might have the information. I think what might be, um, informative for the community for us as RTM members when we're talking about this eighty-two percent commuter population and what housing that they, they might be interested in. Do you have a breakout of like the income distribution of these commuters? I mean, is it largely high-income earners that are commuters? Is it largely middle to low? Is there any way we can have those numbers, um, so that when we start thinking about housing developments? Well, are we actually accommodating the, the, the income kind of level? So we don't have those downward pressures that Mr. Bronk talked about?
I could take a stab at that. I, I do not have an income distribution, but know that those numbers come directly from the US Census. Um, so basically they're capturing where people are coming from, where they are going. Um, I'm not positive, I suppose that's a, that's something we could try to follow up on. If we could get such an income distribution. My theory is, is that we'll find a fairly wide, uh, diversification. Think about the people that you know, who come into town, where are they gonna work? They're gonna work at Pfizer, they're gonna work at the Navy base, they're gonna work at Electric Boat. What jobs do they have? Let's talk about Electric Boat. Starting salary for a welder is somewhere in the forties. But if you're, uh, of a, a higher level position, manager or some sort of engineer, I think you could be nearing closer to a hundred thousand. And of course with overtime, even with a welder, you could probably get up to seventy, eighty thousand a year. So I think we're gonna find that there's a wide spectrum. You have, and that, that's actually in line with why the housing study reinforces. We need a variety of housing, lots of housing choice, small, large, different price points. Because we have a wide spectrum of needs within Groton today.
I, I would also want to double check the housing market analysis may have some of those numbers in it. Because, uh, if memory serves correct, um, the consultant that did that report did break down some of the different income levels of what was needed for the different housing price points. So, uh, I, I'll have to double check that. I wrote a note to myself here. But I, I do think there was some of that data in our housing market study.
Thank you. And, um, just one other kind of point that, um, I know I've made before. It's great, we're having these conversations about community growth and development. I'd like to emphasize the community that already exists here and investment that we need in this community already. I participated in one of those recreation focus groups yesterday. And that was a sentiment echoed again and again was that the amenities offered for recreation in town haven't been invested in. And again, I will emphasize, my district, District Four, has no park, playground, fields owned by the town for residents who already live here to utilize. And as, you know, where I live specifically, I'm about half a mile, a mile from three close schools. William Sealy's getting turned into two hundred some odd units. We don't know what Mary Morrison's doing. Pleasant Valley may or may not be units, even though it's perfectly positioned for that kind of investment. Um, you know, low cost, high impact. So it's some, something to really just, I want to keep centered in these conversations about trying to get more people, chasing more population, investing in the population that's already here would be really great to, to keep in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Priti.
Here in seventy. And, um, lived and worked, uh, through the expansion in the seventies and the inflation uh, that occurred in the seventies, much like it is right now. You know, we're, we're getting huge inflation and at that time we had so many baby boomers graduating. There was plenty of people to fill Electric Boat. And now that unfortunately there aren't baby boomers graduating to fill Electric Boat. And, um, it's, it, it's, uh, it's hard to keep people here. Back then, they were hiring people from Oklahoma. They were making six bucks an hour and they're making twelve bucks an hour at EB. And they came here and lasted about six months and said, forget it. Twice more than three times as expensive as it was, uh, in Oklahoma. So I, I'm worried because EB is expanded from about five thousand in the end of the sixties to about twenty-five thousand in, uh, the eighties and through the middle of the nineties and then crashed back down to seven thousand again. And we have literally dozens and dozens of dozens of apartment complexes that have been built over the years, primarily to handle electric boat, um, uh, workers. And the, the population provide a place for them to stay, only to end up having them empty out when the jobs went away. And I don't know what happened to them, but I imagine they became section eight housing or something else in order to keep them full and being used. So I'm not sure, um, Groton really has the room or the desire. I do know I've read some statistics about the current expansion. They're talking twenty, twenty-five years before they go back down again and the, the major program's over. I wish they would stop that. I wish they would just level load it and keep it steady or maybe even a small marginal increase, but not this up and down and up and down. Because all that does is create problems for everybody. So since the Navy is a taxpayer money and it is the center of the workers in the entire region. Everybody comes from, I know very well, there's more people coming from Westerly in the seventies than there were in Groton going to work at EB way back then. And, uh, I know the engineers loved East Line, we loved Stonington and they love Mystic and they loved Ledger. And there, there's all different kinds of preferences. But somebody told me that, uh, these kids that are now learning their trades, um, and a lot of them from this area to go work at Electric Boat. They're gonna live where their home is. That, that's, you know, whether it's Norwich or Preston or Basra or whatever. North Stonington, you know, you name it, Colchester, we, we have people from all over. I'm not sure that we want to build more housing for apartments that are gonna end up being empty. And, and it makes me nervous. I'd rather see strong transportation programs. And I'm not trying to advocate, I work with C now, not for them anymore. But they, we, we don't have good service, um, for my. But they, we, we don't have good service from out of town into EB. And I think the availability of trying to get people, they're going to find lower prices. And, and if they have a decent way for availability to get here, we may not have as big a, a housing problem. And we may not have the future result of that expansion turn into something that's not necessary after all. Groton's pretty well packed. And I want to make one other point. Amazon is what has killed all the retail business for businesses, you know. And tech, you know, they moved to Waterford because Waterford had a low tax rate with Millstone. And Electric Boat doesn't really reduce our tax, tax, taxes here very, very much. It's, the, the grand list for Electric Boat advisors really not that high. Nothing like the seven or eight hundred million dollars that Millstone was. So they stole a lot of business and the, the people were mostly interested in how much it was going to cost. So they built a ton of stuff in, in Waterford. Where our, our, our Long Hill Road is a nice road. I'm, I'm amazed at how much traffic is there. It, it really is nice. And I, I guess I've heard that Mr. Reardon is talking about converting the old complex venues and everything over into housing like you're talking about. I don't know if it's ever going to do it though. And I, but I watch the damage that Amazon has done. And the lifestyle suggests that yes, we should probably be making houses.
I'm sorry, you're out of time.
So.
I'm sorry, you're out of time.
All those things and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Representative Gustafson.
I just did a quick thank you, Madam Moderator. It was stated earlier that the population dropped from forty-four thousand to thirty-nine thousand. How come that population like lost hasn't translated into like, you know, more housing inventory? It seems like that would be the case, but.
So one of the things that we've seen, and this is really a national trend, is during that same time, household size has also dropped. So, and when you start looking over that as a, a broad population, if it was an average, you know, two point seven people per household before, and you drop that down to, you know, two people per household, I probably should come up with some better numbers off the top of my head. But you might actually need more housing units to populate, to cover the same amount of people. Because now you have less people per household. And I think we can all think of people we know that, you know, divorced couples. How many single people do we know living in a three or four bedroom home that would love to live in something smaller? But that availability might not be there. And, and that's where you start getting into the real specifics of the housing market. In that if we had more one and two bedroom units available, whether it's for sale units, condos or apartments, you'll actually see some of those empty nesters, people that might have, be living in too much house right now, but don't have another option, having the ability to move out of their existing single-family home or something bigger into something smaller. Then that single-family home becomes available for a family and others to actually move into, so.
Representative Norman.
Hi, thank you. Sorry, I just, my list grew. First, I want to say childcare reiterated so important. As a new mom, I experienced myself that I waited eight months on a list and now only have daycare two days a week still, which I run a company and that's really hard. I also come from the perspective where I grew up in southeastern Connecticut, left. And I'm a pretty new person back into this place and it's because I'm a remote worker. So I run a company based in Washington DC. I write, my, my wife runs a company based in New York City. And we are here because we love the town and love what it has. And so I want to reiterate what some of the other people have said around investing in the people who live here. Because I have friends who come and visit and are like, oh, I want to like start looking on Zillow because they would like to buy here too, to do that. To that point, and this might partially be because I live in Groton long point, you talked about income. I think there's also a point here to think about wealth. We do have a lot of people who have second home vacation homes here. And we are trying to attract businesses. I just look around at the folks who did not fill out the census in my neighborhood because they were not here, who have a lot of wealth that would probably be very interesting to businesses. And I want to make sure we capture that in the story that we're telling. Additionally, on the survey you mentioned, interested in how you ran that because I missed it. And I want to make sure that, you know, folks from my community also fill that out and what they want. You talked a little bit about sort of the influx of Airbnb. Do you have an estimate of how many units where you gave that comparison to twenty sixteen to now? What percentage is now sort of those Airbnb or rental units when we're thinking about vacancies? Are we talking two percent, five percent, ten percent of our, like where are we in this world, you know?
So I don't have comparison numbers right at my fingertips. I did see some, I think in the office, I have some data on how short-term rentals have grown from maybe two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one to now. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. When we talk about vacancies, we're looking at housing units that could be, and, and you know, there's definitions in the census data, which is done, you know, by the US government. Every ten years, they do some statistical analyses more frequently than that. But when they're looking at the vacancies, they're looking at available year-round housing units. So when we look, you know, when we talk to our tax assessor about the data that she gets from the multifamily housing, the, the vacancy rates are basically that three percent kind of allows somebody to move out and somebody else to move in. It's, there's a very small fraction there. How a second home that is not made available for someone to live in.
Or just a lot of rentals. We've had a bunch of people come up here and talk about the frustration they have in their neighborhood because companies and other folks have bought up the houses in their neighborhood and are using them as rental properties, right? We've heard that from a number of citizens. Is that a big problem here? Is it a growing problem and something that we should be looking at? If we build more units, are they going to only become more rental units? Are we actually going to house people?
So a lot of the demand that we're seeing right now for new housing is multifamily housing. I don't have a lot of examples or I'm not aware of a lot of examples or really any where multifamily housing, a new complex that's run by a professional development firm is allowing short-term rentals. They're, they're looking for yearly leases, you know, getting that constant monthly income. There might be some models across the country where people are building things now focused a little bit more on short-term rentals. Just as I'm aware that there are companies now that build out single-family neighborhoods purely to rent those neighborhoods out for a long-term basis, because people want a single-family house, but they don't want to own a single-family house. They'd rather rent it and there's not a lot of single-family house rental.
I hear that. If you do have notes on just what percentage of our housing supply right now are short-term rentals versus like historically what that is? We just have a sense of the magnitude of that, that would be incredibly helpful. I think my last thing, just you mentioned that eighty-two percent commuter number. You said that was harming us in our ability to recruit people. I, some of my math could be totally wrong, but I like, just look alone in Navy housing. You have a thousand families in Navy housing, you have three thousand personnel in occupied housing, all of them work in Groton. And that's four thousand jobs that live in Groton that I know of, which is about fifteen percent of the population. So I don't understand how eighteen percent of the population only lives and works in Groton if fifteen percent of that is Navy. So I, if you're going off of census or something else, I think that you might want to adjust that number. I think it's higher than you think and you might not be accounting for Navy personnel the way that it should be. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just wanted to circle back to a couple of things real quick. One on that Navy housing, they are included in the census, but they're in group quarters, the people on base. So there's no home level data, house level data. And when we did the study in eighteen, I think finished up around July, there was about twenty-two hundred people on base and about eight thousand off base. Terms of our mill rate, the last few years, we've been the second lowest in the region. This year with the lowest mill rate in the region. Our mill rate, and that's because of the revale. Our mill rate right now is twenty-one point two eight. The closest one, which was the lowest one, is Stonington at twenty-three point six six, Waterford at twenty-seven point five six, North Stonington at twenty-eight point four five, and New London at thirty-seven point three, three one. I can tell you, I've seen the data before, EB and Pfizer, if we didn't have them, our, our tax rate would be much higher, significantly higher. And then in terms of the mill rates, all, it's all about value of properties in relation to the cost of government. It's all about that. So, yeah, it's all a factor that, that's what dictates the mill rate.
Representative Ivy.
I just wanted to quickly ask, I heard it touched really briefly just a moment ago. But since the pandemic, we've seen a significant increase in remote workers. And I just want to know how that affects your study and how it has recently.
We don't have updated census data on how the population and commuting patterns have changed, really say over the last year or two. I think we'll see some changes with that, the next go around. And when they do their next kind of statistical updates, I don't know if you've seen anything on that page.
I, I forgot, going back to the Navy thing, I forgot a key piece. When I say there's twenty-two hundred people on base in eighteen, eighty-five, forty off includes all their dependents. You're probably talking a couple of thousand off base. So, and there's about ten thousand operate through the base. You're talking a significant chunk that lives out, out of the community. Yeah, there's more that live out than live in though. That's how it plays in the full numbers.
Representative Serf, do you have a final question?
Yes, I do. It seems to me the more we talk about these things, the more, in my mind, I see, as I said, a lot of smaller developments. So that we don't get into fractious things like with the Mystic Oral School and nine hundred units, which nobody in the entire town of Groton wanted. So when you concentrate on smaller developments, that's nice. But what I'm also thinking, we have a lot of areas in town with, with very old housing. We have a lot of trailer parks. We have a lot of like the Quonic Bridge, which has old housing, which is not particularly appealing to anyone. And I'm wondering whether you're able to get any developers interested in redeveloping some of these areas and, and possibly relocating the people who live there in nicer units. If we gave them giant tax breaks.
Your objection, please. Hold on, your objection. Representative Serf, a lot of the people who live in that area own their homes. So I don't think that's pertinent to economic development changing that their homes.
Re, redeveloping, because if you offered them, if you did it a bit at a time and you offered them nicer housing, would, would that it all be appealing to some of the people? I'm not, I'm not talking, I'm not suggesting.
Representative Serf, these are home, these are privately owned homes. The, the town can't come through and, and make those choices to redevelop their homes.
I see. So there's no area where we could, we could appeal to people to redevelop their homes and, and their, and, and possibly increase the number of homes there and make them better for everyone if we gave them big tax breaks. Is there a possibility of that? Mr. Reiner?
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm thinking of how to answer that one. Because what drives economic development and investment is outside money. And developers need to, one, see willing sellers and opportunity to make money. We have a number of properties in town that are for sale, that, as I said before, that people are asking exorbitant amounts of money for. You see properties that are held by families that they can't agree on how to sell property. I can't think of any, you know, locally, do you sometimes see when someone passes away or someone wants to move out of an area? A, a, a smaller house can sometimes be bought up, renovated and expanded into something more. I think somebody had asked at the council meeting about, you know, why aren't we changing single-family houses to duplexes and quadplexes? Well, in some areas, our zoning allows that. That was actually something that staff had really encouraged our planning and zoning commission to look at when we were doing our zoning rewrite. And there were a number of areas in town that were not allowed to have duplexes. Areas that existing today do have duplexes. That, that's an easy way of maybe converting some houses. But it gets very difficult and it's expensive to do single-house conversions in full development. They become very controversial, very adversarial. I mean, I, I think we see what happens anytime development happens in a neighborhood. Very few people like new development being built next to them. I, I, I don't know too many people that are in favor of watching that small field next to them get turned into four houses. You know, I, I've been doing this for almost twenty-five years and there's always objections when it comes to new development, especially in areas that are already tightly packed. It's, you know, we already have enough here, why are you doing it here? Why don't you do it somewhere else? So developers see that for the return on investment time and effort to convert one house here or there as opposed to, all right, how can we do something that's going to have a little bit more of an impact? I, I think we see things like that happen in, you know, San Francisco, Santa Barbara, places where housing prices, land costs are absolutely astronomical. But in Groton, I think there's still some other opportunities that we'll see happen before that.
So there are no easy answers, you're telling me. Well, good luck.
Thanks.
All right, seeing no further questions, thank you so much for, oh, I'm sorry, Representative Aubrey. Sorry, I didn't, and Representative Perry, one second.
Such a little thing. Thank you, guys. You always do an excellent job and you have a thankless job, but we're happy you're here and working on it. I just wanted to mention the fact of, of what I see as a real estate agent. We have a lot of older housing in Groton. But we've had two generations of young families that don't want to improve housing. They want to move into something that's perfect. And until we can come up with some kind of program that motivates younger couples to, to redo older houses, our housing is going to continue to go down in popularity, I think. But I run into it constantly as we're talking about what they'd like to see. And I tell them it's a, you know, there's a really nice area, there's a small here, house there, it's in your price range. And they, of course, everybody looks at pictures today and then they go, we don't want to do all that work. So if we could ever come up with something that was helpful to young people, older people or whatever, to be able to have maybe just education of special programs that are there. We have an FHA construction mortgage. We have a VA construction mortgage now, but I don't think most people know that. But also, we've got to do some education to show these kids how much of a great investment it could be. When they come in here, they do this. When they leave, excuse me, it's a whole different situation. So I, I think personally, a lot of education needs to be done and possibly a program to promote it. But we have a real gap. I mean, it used to be real popular to buy a house and fix it up. First one I bought was condemned. But it worked out beautifully. But, you know, I didn't mind that. I needed it, the price was right. I needed a bunch of bedrooms, I got a bunch of bedrooms. But I didn't run a house. Anyways, it's a problem and it does need to be worked on. And I think it's education and maybe even some real partnerships with like Lowe's or Joblot because they do a lot of teaching. And, you know, we might be able to spike some real interest in fixing up some of these wonderful homes that we have that aren't in downtown Mystic. Thank you.
Yeah, a few cans of paint can do a lot for a house.
Representative Perry.
I know we've moved past that, but I'm kind of appalled because I'm one of those who live out in Aquonic Bridge. I've been there sixty-two years. And I was raised and born in the same home, raised my kids, my grandkids. However, I've worked all my life and put a hundred thousand dollars into my home within the last five years. So if you come out there, come into my home, I would never have anybody tell me to remove it, tear it down or move on. Aquonic Bridge is my home. The only thing we need to do is repair those roads out there. I'm tired of that. All summer long, I've been riding over those roads. We need to repair those, but I would never, never move out of my home. Sidewalks and also the park across the street has been renamed after my son. So that's another reason, I would never move out of Aquonic Bridge.
It's just a reminder, Route one and Route twelve are. It's just a reminder, Route one and Route twelve are not ours.
Thank you, Representative Perry, thank you very much for being here tonight, and we appreciate your time, we've taken about an hour and a half of it, so thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to move quickly on to committee reports, Chairman Barrell. Yeah, two things that we need to get through tonight to vote on. Two things to vote on.
Yep, just one.
So, um, so I know on your agenda, it says emergency management performance grant, that was approved under our budget, so we do not have to approve that. So we are only looking at the ARPA auto theft and violence grants.
City RTM Public Safety Committee met November nineteenth here at the Senior Center, the call order was at six oh four. Role call was myself, Representative Bailey, Representative Hansom, and Representative Ivy. Non-members present, where the town manager, the chief police, and Representative Augustusson. Okay, we went through this, we started working on, Chief Police made presentation on the ARPA auto theft violence grant for thirty-five thousand, this would be to increase patrols in the high-risk areas for auto theft. A motion was made by Representative Ivy, seconded by Representative Bailey. The vote was four in favor, zero opposed, moving on to this body. The adjournment to the meeting was at six twelve. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion, resolution of authorizing application of the ARPA auto theft violence grant.
Seconded by Representative Ivy, I'm going to read this, so we all know what we're talking, what the resolution says, resolution authorizing application for an emergency management performance grant, whereas an emergency management performance grant, EMPG, is to provide states with the ability to assist state, local, territorial, and tribal governments in preparation for all hazards, as authorized by the Robert T. Stanford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, and whereas the town of Groton is eligible to receive state and federal grant funds through the State Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, and whereas since two thousand and four, as one of the conditions of eligibility, the state requires that the governing body for each municipality, in our case, the town council, issue a resolution authorizing the chief executive officer, town manager, to act on behalf of the municipality and governing body, and now therefore be it resolved that the town of, the town council authorizes town manager John Bird to act on behalf of the town of Groton, including executing any and all documents, and to perform all acts and things deemed necessary and appropriate to carry out the terms of the grant program, and to accept the grant in the amount of forty thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty cents. Any questions, Representative Merritt? Yeah, I read the wrong one, let's try again, sorry. Okay, that's the one we don't have to vote on, ooh, this one's even longer, fun, all right. Thank you for catching me on that, resolution authorizing application for an ARPA auto theft and violence grant, this makes more sense. Whereas the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection is offering a thirty-five thousand dollar grant to eligible municipalities to reduce auto theft and other crimes related to auto theft in our communities, and whereas the funding will pay for increased police patrols to help deter these crime, criminal acts from taking place, which in turn will serve the general population by reducing auto thefts and auto theft-related crimes. And whereas the funding for our department's project will be used to support the deployment of extra unit, patrol units dedicated to combating, combating the rise in auto theft and violent crimes in the town, and whereas officers will be utilized in a flexible manner in saturated, to saturate our known locations for stolen vehicles and stolen crimes such as hotels, bars, large parking lots, and neighborhoods known to have higher rates of stolen vehicles and violent crimes, and officers will have, will also be required to engage with citizens of our community to educate them on helpful prevention strategy, strategies they can utilize to help prevent vehicle crimes, and whereas the use of both marked police vehicles and soft cars on marked vehicles will be utilized and to increase our presence to the aforementioned locations in order to ensure our community is safe, and now therefore be resolved that the town council authorize the town manager John Bird to act on behalf of the town of Groton, including excluding any, executing any and all documents, and to perform all acts and things deemed necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of the grant program and to accept the grant in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. Any questions? My question is going to be, is there any matching funds with this?
There is not.
Any long-term costs that will come out of this?
No, it, it does not add any kind of staff, it's for extra patrols, it's basically just overtime.
Okay. Representative Serf.
Um, yes, I've been reading about some car thefts and break-ins on Nextdoor, the, the social media network, and I'm curious, I don't recall that we ever had car thefts in Groton before, can you give us a few more details about the, is it luxury cars, is it ordinary cars, is it?
I can't really say what.
What is the problem?
I, I can't really say what type of level of car, I could tell you, Chief Fisaro told us, since January of twenty, there's been a hundred and twenty-five vehicles stolen in town, and since that time, about sixty-eight catalytic converters have been stolen.
Oh, yeah, right, I've been reading about those.
Now, those are usually a block of them at times, you know, they go through a parking lot and grab a whole bunch of them.
Yeah. Okay, well, I guess we have to protect the catalytic converters, too.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we are voting to accept a grant in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars for ARPA auto theft and violence, from the ARPA auto theft and violence grant, all those in favor, please say aye. If you could please raise your hand if you are online. I don't have a vote for Representative Goethe and Representative Cop, oh, I've got Cop and Gothe, okay, anyone voting no? Any abstentions? That is moved unanimously. Okay, we are on to, thank you very much, we are on to liaison reports, Representative Casper, Gulf report.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, of the Gulf Advisory Board met this past Monday and reported October and September revenues, October revenues were, well, rounds played were thirty-one hundred seventy-three compared to the previous, uh, previous year, same month of thirty-six twenty or four hundred, about four hundred and fifty less rounds. Weather played a big part in that. The revenues for the month totaled ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine, which was down from the previous year of one twenty, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and two. However, total revenue for the year is five hundred and eighty-six thousand and some change compared to five hundred and sixty-seven thousand last year. So they're still ahead of last year, which was the best year to date. Also, the golf course is running a special for, special for veterans, starting Friday through Sunday. Around the golf with a cart is twenty dollars. So if you're a vet, you want to play golf, better call the clubhouse and get your tee time.
Any questions for Representative Casper? Representative Serf, do you have a question for Representative Casper?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I should have taken my hand down.
Okay, that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Representative Aubrey, do you have an EDC report?
Unfortunately, the EDC meeting was camp. Unfortunately, the EDC committee meeting was canceled. And so I would just make an announcement tonight, that our town manager is trying very hard to find new people to put on the economic, economic development committee. It's a very important committee, but right now there are not enough members, there would not be a quorum if everybody that's still there was to show up. So if you know anybody that's talked to you and said, well, I know what we could do in Groton, ask them to be in touch with the town manager, and we'd love to have an opportunity, well, not we, our manager would love to have an opportunity to talk with them and get them onto the committee.
And we have several openings, so.
Yes, we have several.
I received a resignation during this meeting.
How do people get, do they call you directly, or who do they contact?
You could, yeah, you could email me or call me.
Okay.
The town manager makes the selections for the EDC committee.
Okay.
That's why I'm not on it.
Now, now, excuse me, Madam Moderator, elected officials cannot serve on boards and commissions that are created by.
Representative Chase, do you have a report? No meeting, no report, Representative Bright. For those of you who didn't hear that, next meeting is November fourteenth, thank you, Representative Chakom.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, the, the town council met their regularly monthly meet town meeting on November first, twenty twenty-two, six thirty. They had two proclamations, one for Charles Carr Grand for his hundredth birthday, so that's awesome, and recognizing lung cancer awareness month. There were several citizens petitions concerning Branford Manor, open space, rule changes, Mystic and trespass ordinance. Approved the town council thirty-third rules and procedure revisions. They also approved the Mystic Education Center Development Agreement, which I believe just allowed for, you should continue. They also approved the managers of this job description, office clerk position, they approved the emergency management performance grant, the ARPA auto theft and violence grants, the Clodchester School Property Reuse, and they approved their meetings for twenty twenty, yeah, for their schedule, and now our next regular, my vote for December sixth, twenty twenty-two, at six thirty, thank you.
Thank you, any questions? All right, seeing none, we are going to move on to other business, our first item under other business is the RTM twenty twenty-three regular meeting schedule. You should have all received this meeting schedule, any questions? Representative Aubrey, you have a question? Give me a minute, okay, do we need to take a vote on this, yes, okay. Could, does someone want to make a motion to approve this schedule? Representative Chase had her hand up first, someone wants a second, Representative Watson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the RTM twenty twenty-three regular meeting schedule as listed in our agenda, please say aye, or raise your hand if you're online.
Aye.
Missing Representative Gothe, oop, I think I have everybody, okay, anyone opposed? Any abstentions, seeing none, that carries unanimously, any other business? Representative Aubrey, you had said you wanted to bring something up. Microphone, please.
I don't know what would be the appropriate way to do it, so I will ask for advice, but I think it's an appropriate time for us to look into a sergeant-at-arms for the RTM meeting, and hopefully the council would follow suit. I think we need to be able to have the ability to ask somebody to leave the meeting if it's necessary. And so I would ask for your direction on how we could move forward with information and a proposal.
Okay, I will.
Thank you very much.
Into that. Representative Merritt.
Just wanted to pass a remark on the roads in Fort Hill Homes, and for information, they're putting in the water line over by the park.
It's been all summer.
Yeah.
Okay.
And once they get the pipe buried, instead of covering up, they wait to see if it leaks, and let it settle.
My, the end of my driveway is full of water.
Yep.
If, if I suck, it's, it's a mess.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping.
Okay.
That they repay with next summer, I'm not sure.
That's my neck, that's going to be my, versus putting Band-Aids on it.
No, 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 Band-Aids are because of broken water lines repeatedly, they just changed them all.
I've had broken water lines every year.
Yep.
Okay, we're not, we're. Okay. I, last month was asked, or yes, last month was asked to look at the possibility of an ad hoc committee to research some information, which was all sent to you. I believe every question was already answered by town staff. Additionally, our committees are supposed to relate to the RTM, this really doesn't, doesn't fall into the purview of the RTM. So at this point, I'm going to say no to creating an ad hoc committee. It's already, the research has been done by town staff, you should have all received this, if you did not, please let us know. Representative Serf.
Yes, I have a question for the manager, has anybody considered asking, was actually, so commented on this before, asking the state to sell the Mystic Oral School property directly to the town?
We haven't, but we'd have to have a long discussion about the liability, we'd have to have a funding plan in place, you know, to clean it up first, so I wouldn't be super eager to take that on.
What about the old saying, buy it, buy it and they will come? Well, that's, that's a question.
To make it worthwhile, you'd have to have the density we looked at before, I don't, I don't want to readdress that.
Okay, good point, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Powers.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just from the standpoint of the public comments that were made, the public citizens petitions here, the first page that we went on here, public petitions. I think that we have a set of rules here that need to be adhered to at all times when we're together in this room. And I truly believe that a lot of this is unavoidable, but it could be avoided. And Representative Aubrey's comments about having a sergeant-at-arms is something that I think all of us should consider. Okay, and that we need to address each other with the proper decorum. And that that needs to take place every time we stand up, we thank the moderator, and we move forward with our questions. And that if you read Robert's rules, you talk about the question, you don't talk about the people. Okay, so in that, I think we'll eliminate a lot of the conflict that we have in both areas of our government, but we're here to represent the people of our community, and we need to do it in a proper manner, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, anything else under new business? Seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Bailey, second.
Okay, with that, we will be adjourned, thank you.